To call to order for the Board of County Commissioners, it is Wednesday, May 18th. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now is the time for citizen input. I don't believe I see any. I do have citizen input regarding, as I call it, my, the adorable Royal Park. And this is from someone, and I believe we all got the same idea. So, thank you, Alice, for sharing that with us. No other input. Congratulations, Commissioner Devon. You've had a great night. Oh, yes, I know, just, it's another day.
Well, and other elected officials in the county, too.
Yes, yeah.
Lots of races last night, and this is the first step of two, so.
And thank you for-
Glad that it sounds like elections procedures went off without a hitch here.
Yep, that's the key.
Truly, yes. Thank you, Steve Dennison and his crew. So, we do have a consent agenda?
So moved.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Okay, we will go on to action item number seven. I believe we have a public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Nicole Mardell, Senior Planner with Deschutes County Community Development. So, today we do have a public hearing, so we can start with the public hearing script.
Yes, thank you very much. This is a time and place set for a hearing on remand for file number 247-20-000438-PA/439-ZC/22-287-A. A request for a comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment to change the designation of the subject properties from agriculture-exclusive farm use, EFU, to rural industrial, RI. The staff will outline the hearing process that will be followed, procedures that will be followed.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair. The hearing's body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence concerning a remand application requesting approval of a plan amendment and zone change. The address of the property is 21235 Tumalo Place in Bend, and the entirety of the record has been placed before the Board on the project website, including the previous applications. The applicant, Tony Acetti, is requesting approval to rezone and redesignate the subject properties from agriculture EFU, exclusive farm use, to rural industrial, RI. All testimony shall be directed to the hearing's body. At the conclusion of this hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate toward a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will explain the Zoom telephone and in-person participation. Staff will then provide a brief report. The applicant will then present its testimony and evidence with a 20-minute time limit. The appellant will then present its testimony and evidence with a 20-minute time limit. And any other interested persons will then present testimony or evidence with a 10-minute maximum for the group as a whole. The applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony with a 10-minute maximum. And if requested by the hearing's body, staff will then provide closing comments. To comply with House Bill 2560, this is a hybrid meeting. I will ask, do we have anyone participating via Zoom or the phone?
No.
We do not. Excellent. So, I may skip those procedures if you don't mind. And if we have someone join, we can go through those, just for, you know, expedited timing. So, for our in-person participants during public testimony, please raise your hand if you would like to testify, and come to the table as, when you're called up, and state your first name and last name and your mailing address for the record. And we'll skip through the Zoom participants and phone participant slides. So, it is our responsibility as staff and the Chair to hold an orderly hearing, and as part of that, we will be reminding you of any time limits that come up, or when we get to discussion about the limited de novo hearing format, we will notify you as staff with a hand raise if we feel the testimony is out of scope. In addition to oral testimony, if anyone has written testimony to submit, please provide that to me as the staff member. If you're in person, please submit your written testimony prior to beginning your testimony. We will likely be continuing the hearing today, so there will be the opportunity to provide testimony via email. My address will be provided on the screen. Please keep in mind that if your submittal is more than 20 pages in length, includes colored figures, or includes documents which should be printed larger than eight and a half by 11, you'll need to submit the testimony both electronically and as a hard copy. At this time, I would like to ask if there are any objections to this hearing format. If anyone would like to object to this hearing format, please notify us now. Seeing none. So, this is a limited de novo hearing format. So, this hearing is seeking only testimony directed at the issue on remand from the Land Use Board of Appeals, which is the number of employees resulting from the proposed rural industrial designation. This information can be, only can be considered by the Board in their decision. As noted earlier, if parties provide testimony outside of the scope, staff will just raise a hand to notify the Chair. A full written version of the hearing procedures is available at this side of the room. Commissioners must disclose any experte contacts, prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest.
Does any Commissioner have anything to disclose, and if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed. Commissioner Devon?
So, I'll acknowledge, a long history here, being in office. You know, I've, you know, been through decision multiple time on this, but it's very much been in the public meetings. You know, I do know the applicant, but just, just in passing from these proceedings, so I have no conflicts of interest.
Commissioner Chang?
I have no inflix, I have no conflicts and can proceed. I will say that the last time this issue was before the Board of Commissioners. I was brand new. I think it was January 21, 2021, and I recused myself from this, you know, from consideration of the issue. But given that this has come back now, and that we are dealing with a very limited question, I will participate in this hearing.
Okay, thank you. And as Commissioner Devon had several decisions made with this, I've only had one, the one in 2021. And I don't believe I have anything I need to disclose at this time, other than I did have my sign up on Highway 97 next to, and we did disclose that the other day. So, I believe we can proceed.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I will then move into the staff report for this presentation.
Actually, I have a couple more sentences I need to read.
Yeah.
Okay, may I do that, please? Okay. Does any party wish to challenge? Any Commissioner, member of the hearing's body, based on expertise, contacts, biases, or conflicts? Is there anyone that wants to challenge us? I almost thought Rondo was raising his hand. Okay. As, as no challenge, you could be, we could be at an auction, Rondo. As no challenges are presented prior to opening the hearing, does anyone have any procedural objections to the public hearing? Are there any procedural objections? Seeing none, the hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief staff report.
Excellent. Thank you, Chair. So, just to provide a bit of framing for this public hearing today, the property is shown on the screen here, outlined in red. The address is 21235 Tumalo Place in Bend. The property is west of Highway 97, and you can see that Tumalo Road or the Deschutes Junction overchange, overpass, is bisecting the property. The zoning map shown here shows the surrounding zoning of adjacent properties. Property to the north is zoned multiple-use agricultural ton, shown in yellow. To the west and south are properties zoned EFU, exclusive farm use, shown in kind of an orange color. And to the east are rural industrial zoned properties, shown in purple. So, the applicant is seeking a rezone and redesignation from agriculture EFU to rural industrial. At the time of this application, there is no use proposed on the property. They're only seeking, essentially changing the colors on the map. This application was approved with conditions by the Board of County Commissioners on January 27, 2021, and it was then appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals and the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals essentially agreed with Luba's decision, which was to remand the application. The Luba remand was on a pretty narrow issue. It was in regard to the number of employees. So, in the county's decision, the county made a finding that said that there would be an anticipated, quote, "small number of employees." And the Land Use Board of Appeals essentially said that they needed more detail, more of an understanding of the methodology used to come to that conclusion. And the reason why this topic is coming up is in regard to what's called the Schaefer test, which is a test from case law that helps identify whether an industrial use is of in rural or in urban nature. So, specifically, as noted in the staff report, there's sort of a four-step test that was used in a case called Columbia Riverkeeper, which was a follow-up to the Schaefer decision from 2014. And in that decision, there were four items used to identify whether or not the use was rural or urban. The first was whether or not it employs a small number of workers. The second was whether or not the use is dependent on a site-specific resource, which requires the location being at that particular site or adjacent to it. The third being whether the use is one of which that is typically located in rural areas. And the fourth is whether or not the use requires public facilities or services above and beyond what is common for, for that type of property. In response to this remand, the applicant did submit additional material on May 9, which was uploaded to the project website and included in the staff report for today. They found that there would be, in a worst-case scenario, approximately 90 employees potentially, you know, employed on this site through the rural industrial zoning. And they also found that the existing zoning requirements would essentially limit the intensity of these uses. So, there are requirements on square footage of building size, setbacks, et cetera. The applicant also provided a set of alternative findings through essentially a belt-and-suspenders approach, in which they noted that because these uses are already limited by the code, there is essentially no need for, you know, finding this number of employees or utilizing the Schaefer test. This was an item that was brought up in the discussion before Luba, but because it wasn't considered at the local level, Luba couldn't consider it in that decision. In regard to resolved issues, I wanted to note these because of our limited de novo hearing today. So, several items were before the Land Use Board of Appeals and were considered resolved and were not included in the remand. Just a short list, a brief discussion, more details in the staff report. But these include the traffic study, and whether or not the worst-case scenario findings or methodology were acceptable, whether or not the comprehensive plan limits rural industrial areas to those that are listed in the comprehensive plan today, compliance with Goal Six, air of water land quality, and Goal 11, public facilities, discussion about the agricultural land quality, and whether or not the property is agricultural land in the context of Goal Three, and the need for a Goal 14 exception. We did receive two written comments from Central Oregon Land Watch. Those comments noted concerns regarding the scope of the applicable criteria listed in the notice, the hearing notice being inadequate due to the timing of when it was sent out, methodology of how the applicant quantified the number of employees, and concern about an inconclusive outcome of the Schaefer test. Staff wanted to note specifically on the hearing notice concern, staff sent the notice 14 days in advance of the hearing. And the, the note from Central Oregon Land Watch cited a case that discussed a 20-day notice being necessary for a Land Use Board of Appeals remand for the first hearing following that remand. So, staff was unaware of this case when the hearing was sent out, but we believe that just in the practice of, you know, good policy, you know, good public notice, we are recommending today to continue the public hearing, both the written and oral portion of the hearing for an additional 20 days, just to clear up any potential procedural errors that may arise if this continues on to the Land Use Board of Appeals. So, with that, as you can see for next steps here, it's our staff recommendation to accept testimony today, but continue the hearing, both oral and written, to a date certain, which would be approximately June 8, 2022, would be the, the meeting that would be available on that, during that week. The Board also has two other options to close the public hearing and leave the written record open for a date and time certain, or close the oral and written record. I also wanted to note that there is a 120-day timeline for this remand application, so the date of the final decision in which that need to be, would need to be issued, would be August 5, 2022.
Nicole, just to confirm what you're saying, staff is recommending, is that you're saying we should keep the oral and the written open until June 8? And so, at June 8, if we decide to follow that recommendation, we would allow testimony again?
Correct. That is our, our staff recommendation.
Okay, all right. It, it just seems a little different than sometimes we've done this, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, in this case, we, we feel it's just, you know, better to provide more notice, more time, rather than less, just to avoid any, you know, procedural errors that may arise.
Okay.
So, with that, that concludes my staff reports. The project website is listed here, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that.
I guess one basic question I have is, so, my understanding is that the state doesn't provide us any criteria to decide what number of employees is rural or, you know, or non-rural? They, they leave that to us to, to determine? Is that, is that accurate?
Correct. That is my understanding. There isn't a finite number, and each case is on a case-by-case basis, so it's, I think, difficult to look to other cases for a threshold that we could utilize.
And, and we don't have, I mean, it's hard to look to other cases, but are there other situations that are worth taking a look at, just to, you know, get a sense of the breadth of, of the way this, this issue has been addressed?
Staff isn't aware of, of any cases in preparation for the public hearing today that would be relevant or that we could utilize. But I might look to Will Groves behind me if he's aware of any cases, or if we should, you know, maybe do additional research as staff, if that mattered.
Good morning, Board. For the record, Will Groves, your planning manager. I am not aware of any cases that guide you and how you should interact with this, with regard to this. Certainly, the Schaefer test is something that came up previously and will be addressed by the parties. You know, the, I think the, if you think of the rules that are going to apply to this, to the, the decision space that you're in, Luba's, I think, done a good job of defining what that decision space looks like with regard to what constitutes a small number of employees to ensure that this is an inherently rural use. And you're going to hear the parties testify to those issues.
Thank you. I guess one other, one other question. There is a, there has been, over the last year or two, and there will be into the future, a whole bunch of work done on the Deschutes Market Road, you know, interchange. And I'm wondering whether that kind of, you know, modification of the interchange, increase of capacity for traffic, does that have any relevance to determining whether this is, you know, an, an urban or rural industrial use?
My understanding would be no, but the parties will be testifying that, to that today. Though, in the prior Luba proceedings, the, the question of if this was inherently a rural use, or if it was an urban use, to which a Goal 14 exception would be necessary to establish it, the argument's primarily circled around two notions. One of them is, is that in state law, there are these urban unincorporated communities and unincorporated rural unincorporated communities. And Deschutes County has previously rested on the notion that so long as the uses that we would allow in a rural industrial zone are less intense than those unincorporated communities, that they would be inherently not urban. And so, I think you'll hear testimony today that, you know, that tries to reinforce the notion that regardless of the number of employees at this site, that the use is inherently not urban in relationship to those unincorporated communities, because it's less intense than that. In the previous Luba proceedings, Deschutes County went with a belt-and-suspenders approach, using what was called the Schaefer test for the intense, the intensity of impacts. And one of the conclusions that came out of that was that there would be a small number of employees that would be at this property, and Luba scratched their head at that and said, "Tell us more about small." So, you may hear an argument today that this, that this use, because of the uses that are allowed in the rural industrial zone and the limitations placed thereon, that these use, that the zone is inherently rural, and that no further constraints are necessary. However, you probably will also hear a belt-and-suspenders argument, that to the extent that a Schaefer test is applicable here, that there is a way to assign a trip cap or a number of employees that will ensure that this is inherently rural use as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Will. So, we're ready at this time, then, to hear from the applicant, or who, he might be representing him, Mr. Acetti? And we do have the, we have the timer available for 20 minutes?
Correct. Yep, the applicant can, can present.
Thank you, Sharon.
Good morning. Thank you. Tony Acetti, the applicant. My attorney, Bill Cluse, is in Eugene. He cannot get on the Zoom system. And, but he wanted to concur that the extension of the 20 days is fine with him and agreeing with that opportunity to finish that. And so, what has happened here is the, the limited-
Commissioner, do you want us to see if we can bring him in?
Well, I think he's still trying. I don't know how, I don't know how it works. He's very frustrated.
Okay.
But because of the-
We're working on that now.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm sending him the link again, and I'll give him a call.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Oh, great. Well, I won't take up a lot of time, because I think, because of the limited issue and the question of being how we derived of this amount of employees and trips generated through the Green Book, which is a nationally accepted county statewide source for TIA, we have the, our traffic engineer, Mr. Joe Baseman here. And if you have any, I would like him to speak about this, so he can answer any questions that you have. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Baseman, Transite Consulting. So, when we started this process, we were, we were really looking at traffic. And we were trying to make sure we were looking at this worst-case, worst possible case, trip generation scenario. What is the impact of going from EFU to a rural industrial zone? So, we, we looked at a development scenario that, that really looked at a bundling of the most intense possible uses in the RI zone. You know, we're looking at 10 different uses, a subdivision of this property, maxing out its potential. There's a difference between a reasonable scenario and a worst-case scenario. And just to reiterate, this is a worst-case scenario. Within the ITE manual, there is information on numbers of employees, trips, trips based on number of employees, and trips based on building sizes. So, when this issue of employment came up, we took this worst-case scenario, and we said, "Okay, well, if we translate that back to employees, what does that mean?" And by doing the, the back calculation, it's 90 employees that this- And by doing the back calculation, it's 90 employees that this is equivalent to. That doesn't mean there's 90 people on site at a time. That means there's 90 employees on the payroll of this worst-case scenario. So those might be part-time employees, they might be working different shifts, whatever else, but that's really the way this works out too. Now, if you step back from this hypothetical worst-case scenario, and you look at Greystone Lane and the uses that surround this area, you see building supply stores that don't have 90 employees. You see storage facilities that probably have about four employees. And so I'd caution you on looking at worst-case from traffic, just to make sure we covered our bases, to a likely number of employees. And yeah, there's some crazy scenarios you can dream up within some of this, but that doesn't happen, not just in this area, but anywhere in Deschutes County. So that's really what I wanted to say. The employment number is based on that worst-case scenario. It's based on information from the ITE Trip Generation 11th Edition Manual, and that's really the best information we can go from. Happy to answer any questions.
So real quick, so TIA is Traffic Impact Analysis. That was just an acronym used real quick. And you're speaking to that?
Correct.
And then you're saying that a worst-case scenario for the uses that are kind of on the horizon, I guess, is what we're trying to say, back calculates to that number that's on the record now, 90?
That's correct.
And that that 90 number is probably even bigger than the reality of what might even happen there?
It's bigger than anything around there.
Yep. Just for clarity. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, you did have, what, five different industries when you were doing that analysis to get to the 90, so.
Five different industries, and in those individual industries, some of those have three or four different separate uses, so it's subdividing this whole thing into tiny parcels and trying to maximize the uses.
Okay.
So the first use, potentially use listed is specialty trade contractor. Can you, can you give us a bit of an image of what that business looks like? And I guess one of my big questions about this breakdown into five different potential uses is, you know, specialty trade contractor is the most intensive use in terms of employees? What would preclude using the entire site for that one use as opposed to splitting it up among these five?
That's a great question. So within the rural industrial zoning, there's a limitation on how big a single building can be. And when we work with county staff, we realize that if you take a parcel this large, you're not going to have it just full of these specialty trade contractors. And what that means is, it's like a plumber, and all his staff that come in for the day pick up their parts and head off for their different uses, or an electrician or something like that. It's just not reasonable to have, you know, 20 or so acres of that specific use in small buildings throughout here. So we tried to look at a mix of uses. Veterinarians, another one that was listed. You're not going to have that many veterinarians in one location.
Thank you.
Actually, manufacturing had 39, so you would put the same rules to that, that it could have, what is it, 20,000 square feet? And that's probably the max that could happen on the 21 acres?
Yeah, that was also looking at floor area ratios and, you know, what's possible out here.
Okay. All right. Did we, has the attorney been able to?
Correct. Yes, we have the-
Oh, good.
The attorney for the applicant, Bill.
Will, you've worked another miracle. Thank you.
I have.
No, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Bill Close. Is it time for me to say a few words?
Yes, please.
I apologize. I got, I was doing all the right things, and I somehow got stuck in a backwater of the Vimeo software and invitations to sign up for a premium program. And I'm telling you, people on Social Security should not be put through this kind of angst I just can't handle. So I think your planning director, someone at the county, sent me a straight-on, traditional Zoom link, and I clicked on it, and so now I'm here, and I'm just thrilled. All that said, I don't have that much to say this morning. I want to concur with your staff's recommendation that this matter be continued to a later date, solely for the reason that Land Watch, Deschutes County, has, you know, raised this procedural complaint that, strictly speaking, there needs to be a 20-day written notice. They provided a case, we looked at the case. It's very squishy area. The Court of Appeals said, you know, "Under the particular circumstances of this matter, we think the 20 days is noticed." And in that matter, really, when the matter came back to the county on remand from Luba, it was a subdivision proposal, and it was actually amended, you know, so there was an amended proposal in front of the local government, and the Court of Appeals says, "In those circumstances, you would need the 20 days' notice." However, we really want to be cautious here because we do not want to go to Luba and come back again. This application is for just a zone change, but, you know, there are years and years and years of work and litigation prior to this that got us to this point. My daughter hadn't started college when this all began, and she's now teaching first grade. So we're down to the last baby steps of this, and we want to do it right one last time. That's all procedural. We completely agree with the county staff that we need to be careful here, and that ceasing this to a later date is a good idea. With respect to the merits, our traffic engineer gave it the global summary. It's a good summary. This matter came back from Luba on one tiny issue, which related to the need to show that we have, we'll have a small number of employees. And his traffic analysis documents that based on a reasonable worst-case analysis. And that's a term of art, reasonable worst-case analysis. And what you'll see in the 17-page memo from Central Oregon Land Watch is, you know, the broad allegation that, you know, we haven't proven that it's not possible to get much more intensive uses on the property. And she's hypothesizing about feather factories and cellophane factories and so on. We need to come back to the baseline term of art, which is reasonable worst-case analysis. And that is what our traffic engineer used by looking at a number of outright permitted uses in the rural industrial zone, combined with the square footages limitations and other restrictions that come with your code. So our mission, when Central Oregon Land Watch takes this up on appeal again, is going to be to show that our traffic engineer's methodology, which we hope you endorse, hypothesized a reasonable worst-case analysis for this site. And the result analysis is we can expect 90 employees max, which comes out to like four employees per acre, and that that is rural in nature. That's the brass ring. We have to demonstrate that that number of employees is rural in nature. As your staff said, we're asking for backup findings as well. And those backup findings, in our view, make the case that when you folks adopted the rural industrial zone, you put uses in it that you thought would be rural, and you submitted that to the state, and the state acknowledged that as in compliance with GOAL 14. So our safety net is that so long as we're proposing uses that are allowed outright in your zone, under the development standards that are in your zone, that that by definition is rural because the LCDC in its wisdom acknowledged it as rural. Now, those findings were included in round one, but Luba just didn't grok them. Luba got a little confused and said, "We need to come back and address employee numbers again." We think Luba got that wrong, and so in the findings that we're proposing to you, we're sort of driving that point home again. That is, when you adopt a rural industrial zone that lists certain uses allowed outright, and the state says that is in compliance with GOAL 14, then you've done all you need to do to demonstrate that this is a rural use. So first set of findings, 90, under a reasonable worst-case analysis, is rural. Backup findings, this use is a use that's allowed and acknowledged rural industrial zone, so that's adequate also. So that's longer than I wanted to talk between now and the continued hearing. We will take apart the Central Oregon Land Watch arguments in more detail. We'll amend our proposed findings for you, and we'll hopefully be done with this in early June. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Okay.
Glad to be here.
I do believe we have a representative from Central Oregon Land Watch if you want to present testimony at this time, and you will also be given 20 minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chair.
Good morning.
For the record, my name is Carol Macbeth, and I'm a staff attorney with Central Oregon Land Watch. I appreciate the clarity with which your staff has explained and answered your questions this morning, their grasp of the issues. And we'd also like to recognize upfront that we admire Transite Consulting's work, and we think that they do provide excellent transportation analyses. With that said, I'd like to continue to answer some of the questions that have been posed this morning. Commissioner Chang had a very insightful question when he asked, "Is there a law that would say whether the number of employees is rural or urban?" This, along with other issues in this case, go to fundamentals of the law. There is no law, but the public is entitled to have a law. When the county makes a decision, there should be some law against which your decision is measured. There is no law in this case. It's just, it's basically a decision-making process that is extralegal. It's based on a test that Luba uses to make such decisions. It's a judicial test. It's not a legislative concept, and that's important because the test has a special purpose, and beyond that purpose, it can't be used. And it is our position that the applicant is trying to put, you know, a round peg in a square hole because they're trying to use this test that doesn't apply here. And that's because the test was developed for like an asphalt plant, a specific plant, and the plant would have its own, like, someone would construct an asphalt plant, and it might have walls that would be a certain width and a certain size. There would be a number of employees that would work there, and when a county went to consider it, they could consider all of the Schaefer factors, the test, and say whether that use was urban or rural. But here, the applicant doesn't say a use. So the Schaefer factors run into a brick wall because it's like a Zen koan where you're trying to say, "Well, how many employees does a use have that isn't there? What is the odor emitting from a building that isn't there? What is the noise coming from a building that isn't there?" It's a subject for meditation, but as you point out, there's no law about it. It's all very vague. In fact, the test doesn't apply or can't be applied under these particular circumstances. There's all sorts of law about a goal exception, so the law is that urban uses are inside the urban growth boundary and rural are outside. The Supreme Court said it's not about whether someone, about whether it is urban or rural. When someone says, when Land Watch or a member of the public says it might be urban, that triggers the goal exception to GOAL 14. That's a completely thought-out process. There's law that you can apply. If the applicant will go through that process, everything will be clear to the county and to the public. But instead, they're trying to use this Schaefer test, which, as we said, doesn't apply here because it applies to a specific use. I mean, the, Luba has said and ruled in 2021 that it can be applied, that legally can be. There's no law that says it can't be, but that's, it's a question of, again, are there answers to the question? And your own hearings officer, in her decision in 2020, she pointed out that for two of the factors, she knew there's just no answer. When the applicant talks about the test, we hope you'll see in their testimony, they talk about getting a negative answer to these questions. It's not a negative answer. There's no answer at all. And we're saying it's the same thing here with the employees, and I would like to address this number of 90. As we pointed out in our written testimony, eight is the average number of employees in Bend itself. We know that's urban inside the urban growth boundary. That's clearly urban, and eight is the number here in Bend. So eight is about what you might expect to find on average for an employer in an urban area. That is what it is in an urban area in Deschutes County.
For clarity, eight employees per acre? Or what are you referring to?
Eight employees per enterprise.
Enterprise.
Each firm has that. And that's what's being, that's what's under consideration here, because again, this is a test for one use. But the applicant himself has said that there's going to be 90, which 90 on this property, that's what they're saying, that this test can be applied to. So the answer's 90, where it would be eight inside an urban growth boundary. There will be 90 people there that weren't there before, is basically the result of this inquiry. So that's clearly an urban use. Now, this is not baby steps. This is an insurmountable obstacle. The question before you is whether it's urban or rural. If it's urban, because there's 90 people there and for a bunch of other reasons, then there has to be an exception to GOAL 14. That's just the legal process that one goes through, and they're not taking an exception to GOAL 14. So until they do, the county commissioners really don't have any opportunity to do anything but deny it and ask the applicant to come back with a goal exception, because 90 is what they're saying. And we did go through quite a few reasons why this is an underestimate. I mean, it is not a conservative estimate, and reasonableness is not part of it. This is a worst-case scenario because the test doesn't apply. We don't think it's possible to apply it in this situation. The only thing the county can do, when you're trying to decide, is it urban? Is it rural? You have to know the absolute worst number there can be. If you don't know the worst number there can be, then you could say, "Well, it looks like there might be around five," or "There might be around 90." But someone's going to come in, and they're going to do the maximum that they can do. That's, they have a right to maximize their profit. So you have to, one has to think about in the future, what will the future landowner do? What will his maximum be? Not reasonable. He doesn't have to be reasonable. He gets to go to the limits of the law. It's if the law tells him that he can only have, you know, five, which might be a rural use, then he can only have five, but the law doesn't tell him he can only have five, the law is silent. Your law says he can have a 7,500-square-foot building, then a few feet away, he can have another 7,500-square-foot building, and on this property, mathematically, he could have 122 7,500-square-foot buildings, and there's nothing to keep him from doing it.
So is it your position that having a vibrant economy with living weights, jobs, is a bad thing?
Oh, Commissioner, that's an interesting question. No, we don't. We think that Oregon has proven through its vibrant economy and through Deschutes County's vibrant economy and through the city's vibrant economy, that keeping growth within urban growth boundaries is good for the economy. People want to move to Bend. People move here in droves, and they start companies here. They start high tech, and they start industry. There is industrial land inside Sisters, inside Bend, inside Primeville, inside Madras, inside Redmond, all of which is waiting for someone to come along and start industrial uses to have employment. That would be great, and we really favor that, and we always advocate for industrial lands inside urban growth boundaries. The only reason Central Oregon Land Watch disagrees with this one is it's trying to put industrial land way out in the farms. The people who bought the land next to this, they didn't know that industry was going to come because there'd be no reason to believe that anyone in their right mind would put industry this far outside an urban growth boundary, but that's what the applicant wants. It's in the applicant's interest perhaps, because the applicant gets to buy low and sell high, but it's not in the interest of the neighbors who bought farmland and expected it to continue, nor is it in the interest of people who followed by the rules and bought industrial land inside the UGB. If they bought land in the UGB in Redmond, they paid industrial land prices for that, and they would be competing against an industrial use here that got to buy farmland and turn it into industry, which no one would have expected. I just want to emphasize again that urban or rural is the question before you. Is 90 people urban or rural? That's what it's come down to because of the Schaefer test. There's been some reference to the idea that this is like a sliding scale. We don't agree with that, and that would be something that probably would have to go to the Oregon Supreme Court. Is there just a demarcation? You're inside the urban growth boundary, and it's urban. You're outside, and it's rural. That's what we believe, but the applicant is putting forward a theory that it could be a little bit urban, and it's a little bit rural, it's a little bit urban, it's a little bit rural, down to having something to do with urban unincorporated communities? We don't agree with that. It's not a sliding scale. If something's urban, it goes inside the urban growth boundaries, and a GOAL 14 exception would be required in this case. And if that, if the scope is expanded to include that, we would want to see that resolved by the Oregon Supreme Court if necessary. And then to close, I would like to address the issue of the procedural error. It was not just a procedural error, it's a substantive error. The public has a substantial right to the amount of notice that the legislature has given them. So as a member of the public, Land Watch also has the right to 20 days' notice in this case, and it was a serious substantial error, not a procedural error. And there isn't, that was just one example of a case. We'd be happy to provide others. of a case. We'd be happy to provide, provide others where this was applied to a remand hearing. We wanted to provide that because it clearly is a right that is established for hearings. And that case just illustrates that it is also true for a remand hearing for the reason that no one would know about a remand hearing unless we're told about it. So we need to be told about it. And by law, we have the right to be told about it with 20 days' notice. And for that reason, we would have appealed it if, if you find against us. We certainly hope that the commissioners will rule in, in Land Watch's favor. But if you don't, that would be a separate issue for reversal. Although we do think that this issue will be addressed sufficiently by having the record kept open for 20 days. We hope that this will establish in Deschutes County for the future that 20 days' notice is what the public is entitled to. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I still don't understand your, your eight employees per enterprise number or ratio. You know, if that is, so is, that's just kind of the average or the mean, median business size in Bend, or?
You see, in our testimony, we attached the study. I can't remember the name of the economic consulting firm in Bend who prepared that analysis. But they did an economic analysis overall. We can provide the entire study. We just provided that part of it. It's called HVS Market Pulse. And the expert there was describing an economic overview of the area. And they said, there's a lot of different industries. Bend is home to a variety of industries. However, the average firm only has about eight employees. So if the average firm in Bend has eight employees, we're just saying that that's an indication of how many employees on average there are when one looks at the businesses inside an urban growth boundary. They will have eight employees in Bend. So when you're trying to get some idea of what is a rural or urban number of employees, out in the farms, there's no employees. Unless someone has a big ranch, they might have ranch hands. There's these smaller farms and mixed-use agriculture, they don't have any employees. So the number is zero. And we would be going straight from zero, or maybe one, to, or a handful of people at the school or something, to 90, when in Bend, a firm would just have eight. It's just, this, there are not, there's no one there now. If it continued as a farm, there'd be one or two. And all of a sudden, there's going to be 90, according to the applicant.
Carol, did they give a median also? Sometimes?
They just, they were just, this is the average firm. So I think average is what they're saying, not the median. So.
Sometimes it's important to know the median.
Yeah, I think the median might be lower, Commissioner, just because we have the hospital, and we have some really larger employees that would, that, there's not very many of those. So the median would be a lower number. But the average is eight, is what they're saying. And that includes, of course, those really large employers. Whereas there's a lot of restaurants and stuff that might not even have eight, if you see what I'm saying.
Okay.
It seems like when we're talking about urban or rural, we're talking about a, like, like a spatial intensity of employment. I mean, and so that the number of employees per business doesn't really, I, I, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure if that, if I find that relevant or not. I mean, I, what I immediately go to is trying to think about industrial areas, both, both within cities and outside of cities. And, you know, I can think of, you know, I can think of places in, in, you know, outside of incorporated cities. Bend Research, right? You know, it's the, the spatial intensity of employment in, in that confined, you know, and I assume that's an industrial-zoned area. I mean, it's pretty high. So, yeah, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if, to me, the kind of size of businesses is, is as relevant as.
Well, we're looking at, it's, the number of employees isn't a factor that is considered in the test that the applicant has set for himself. So the commissioners need to consider which one is rural and which one is urban. And as we're saying, on the surrounding farms, there aren't any. We believe that a rural level of employment is around zero, one, or two. So that's rural. We know what rural is. This use has to be rural before it can be allowed. It has to be a rural number of employees. So we're looking at, well, what's an, what's an urban number of employees? And we found this number, which is, these are urban uses. They're businesses inside the urban zone, so they're urban, and they have eight. So we're just saying that that might be, that is an example of, in central Oregon, what is the average number of uses that one sees in urban uses, which aren't farms? They're businesses. And so we're just, those are urban. So we don't know exactly what they mean by trying to put industry out here. What we do know is that rural means zero, one, or two. And they're talking about 90. Whatever, wherever they got it from, you'll have to ask them about firms or building sizes or how they figure that out. 90 is too many for this land, which is in the middle of a rural area. Zero would be a good number. Two would be a good number. Five might be a good number. But 90 is way too high for a rural zone. You have to have a rural use, or you need an exception to Goal 14.
Do you have, do you have any kind of data on the rural industrial uses that are, that are in close proximity to this site?
Well, we could call.
On the other side of Highway 97, or?
The thing is, Commissioner, that's so interesting about that is that up until quite recently, several years ago, for this applicant's benefit, the county amended its zone. The zone only applies, only applies to industries that were present way in the past before zoning laws. So this has never been tried before. This is an idea that the applicant has, which we don't believe has any merit, but, but they're trying to do it. But, so the examples that you're talking about, for example, Willamette Greystone is across the road. They have 65 employees overall. And we believe they have a retail center somewhere in central Oregon. So we don't know. Out of six places, we don't know. We think they might have like 10. But I could call Willamette Greystone and provide you with that data of how many they have. But I'm sure that all 65 aren't there. That's not their headquarters or anything. So it's not even that. It's more, it could be less than 10, but I think it might, I'm just guessing. I think it might be around that number. But that's around the number that you might see for other rural industrial uses. So again, it's, there's no, there's not 90. And with all due respect to Transite Consulting and everything, this isn't, this isn't like transportation, because in transportation, that's Goal 12. Well, we might be looking at a reasonable case scenario. Who would really be there? Those things are all very relevant for transportation, but not here, because we need to know if it's urban or rural. And if it could be 1,200, if it could be 2,000, we, one can't afford to have that found out later when someone goes to maximize their use. We have to know the worst case now, because now is when the goal's applied. Now is when we have to decide if it's urban or rural. Later, if it turns out that it is urban, this person will have a right to industrial land. They will have bought industrial land. It would be too late to tell them no, right? They have a right to develop it right up into the extent of the law. So the goal right now is to find out what does the law allow, not whether it's reasonable or not, but what the law allows.
So this is a zone change application, and you're trying to lock down a future state, it sounds like, as in, the maximum number is X, whatever we come up with here, to show the justification for this zone change. So is, is any of your motivation about a future state where, oh, you went past the number that you told us you were going to get to? You know, I'm trying to think through that a little bit, because you're, you're referring to a future state which you might not appreciate or like, but we're not even there. I mean, there's a future application for, you know, a building or a business or whatever would happen.
Well, what we're saying is that, that there wouldn't be any grounds for an appeal, then. There wouldn't be any place for, for Land Watch to enter, because the, the zone change is the time when one talks about the public's interest. The public has an interest in seeing farmland preserved for farm uses. And to keep urban land inside urban growth boundaries, it's been such a winner of an economic model. So the public's interest in not having industry out here is now.
But land values are way up. Housing is hard to come up with. It's hard to justify even commercial and industrial uses when property for residential is so high. So I don't know that they were celebrating the great system here. We're, I think we're, we're watching a system that's been shaved to such a fine point, it's contentious to do anything these days. So I don't, you know, you're saying that your vision is that it's so great we're putting them in the UGBs, but now we're seeing, you know, high land costs everywhere, very high, unreasonably unhealthy high costs.
Right. I agree with that. What we're saying here is that the applicant is asking the county to find that what they're suggesting is, is rural in nature, but the surrounding uses only have one or zero employees. That's rural in nature. And what they're suggesting isn't rural in nature. And, and what, what a worst-case scenario means is the worst that this law allows. What the law says is it has to be within 7,500-square-foot buildings. That doesn't say they can't have multiple 7,500-square-foot buildings and multiple employees within those buildings. So up to 90 is what they're estimating themselves.
Yeah, provides that analysis of getting up to 90, which provides that outer limit of what the, you know, future uses might be. So that, I mean, that seems like a reasonable maximum limit to, and to say, we're going to show our work. That's what we're going to be doing for the.
Well, that's what I, that's what I debate, and that'll be a question, you know, that needs, that you will have to consider among yourselves, is whether it is a question of reason. We don't believe that reason is applicable. We think it's totally applicable for the transportation analysis, because you're really trying to find out that, that number of cars. But this isn't about the reason. This is about whether it's urban or rural by definition. What, what is the essence of urban? What is the essence of rural? And if it can ever be, not, not reasonably, but if it could ever be urban, and nothing could keep it from being that, then that's what you need to look at, the very worst case, which hasn't been provided here.
So when, and you started off your testimony saying, the law should be, the law should be the definition of this. So you, you think, when you say that, that's the state land use system, taking away the authority of a local jurisdiction to even have this opportunity? Is that what you're saying?
No, no, no. I'm talking in a larger sense, Commissioner, that in, in terms of decision-making by the county, I'm, when I say the law, there, there ought to be a law to guide the commissioners.
In the statewide land use system?
No, a county law or any law. The county can adopt their own regulations. But, but unless there is a law, and it's on the books, and you say, oh, look, our law says this, and we're applying that law to the facts, that's, that's what we're looking for. That's what, what is the ideal. And in this case, as Commissioner Chang pointed out, he doesn't have a law to look to. It's not, it's not that kind of decision. It's a.
And this is the body that defines that, you know? Even if this is new territory, this is a local jurisdiction. A lot of people, a lot of land here locally. And so I guess I'm trying to get back to that same concept. Are you suggesting that Deschutes County puts more definition in, or the state land use system puts more definition for the law?
I think that, that it will be up to you to decide in the first instance what you believe is a rural level of use, if you think that this meets that definition or not. And yes, that's, so it is up to you without a law to look at. I guess that's what we would say.
Thank you.
So if I'm, if I'm following you correctly, you're saying that within existing zoning requirements, you could build a very large number of 7,500-square-foot buildings each within this property, and each of those, if it's rezoned to rural industrial. And each of those could, could contain, you know, some number of employees. Can you either, you know, either now or, you know, before June 8th? Is that the date we're talking about?
Yes, June 8th.
June 8th. Could you quantify that for us? You know, how many?
We could definitely try to do that, Commissioner. I would like to point out, though, that in land use hearings, the burden of proof is on the applicant. We have no burden of proof. We raise the questions, and it's up to the applicant to disprove them. If the applicant can't prove that this is a rural level of use, then the use must be denied. And what we're saying is that they have not proven that there couldn't be, mathematically, there's 122 7,500-square-foot buildings. They haven't proven, why is it that there isn't going to be that? They haven't proven that there can't be, I don't know, 100 people inside each of those buildings. We don't know, because we don't know the number of people that work in a feathers factory. I mean, we know that's an odd term, cork factory. These are the uses that the county will allow on this property. Those are the things that must be decided. It's not going to be easy. It wouldn't be easy for us to prove or disprove. But we didn't set this task. The applicant has said, this is a rural use, and it's up to him to prove it. If he can't prove it, then it has to be denied, because it's against the law to allow an urban use or a non-rural use. So is it rural? Is it urban? How many people do work in a cork factory? He can't say that there won't be 100, 7,500-square-foot cork factories, whatever those are. And he doesn't know how many people work there. That's the worst case. I mean, of course, there are setbacks, and of course, there's other restrictions, so it won't be the full 122 buildings. But there's still, you know, dozens, scores of buildings, each one of which might have a lot of people. For example, Bend Research will have a certain number of employees. Do they have 350 square feet? The estimate that this applicant used, there's 35 feet on one side and 10 feet on another side. Is that normal for a factory? We don't really, that doesn't sound like it to us, but we don't know. We don't think that there's any data to answer it. And I just want to say again, it's not Land Watch saying this. The applicant says that they can show that it's rural. But when they turn to the world and ask for an answer to these questions, the answer isn't there. The test isn't useful. It isn't going to help them. There is no answer to the number of employees for a use that hasn't been specified. If they will say, we want an asphalt plant, and then an asphalt plant has five employees, and this is the odor, and this is the use, well, then we would all come in, and we would know what we were talking about. But we are being asked to talk about nothing. We're being asked to talk about, we don't know. There's this many square feet, and there's this many people per square foot, but we don't know how many there are in this use, and we don't know how many there are in that use. They don't know anything, because the question is a very difficult one. It's, again, it's if they wanted to make it more, we, we recommend that they do. We recommend they say, we want this use, then you, as commissioners, and we as the public, and Land Watch could come in and talk about something that is real, that has a number of employees, that has a size, that has an odor, that has a noise.
Carol?
Yes.
I've actually, we've gone over like.
Oh, of course.
Extra. I mean, because they were asking questions.
We were asking questions, yeah.
Right. So, but I just wanted to, I don't know, are there any other questions from the board?
I'm glad we're able to acknowledge that 20-day window. We'll be bringing this back, you know, in the future, too. So good discussion today.
Well, we'll try and come up with some, some data, but I'm not, I, one of our, our problems with the whole procedure is that we don't think the answers are there for us or for the applicant. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Sadi, or Mr. Klos, would you care to use your 10 minutes for rebuttal?
Sure. Thank you. Sure. And I will use less than my 10 minutes, because we have an opportunity.
Oh, wait, I should acknowledge if there's any other testimony in the room. We have had several people join us before you do your rebuttal. Is there any other testimony? Stephanie, has anyone come on Zoom? No phone calls? Thank you, Nicole. Okay. All right. So you may go ahead, Mr. Klos.
Thank you. Just several points. This issue of what is rural and what is urban, and as you move along the continuum from rural to urban, when do you cross the magic line? This honestly is one of the great metaphysical questions in Oregon land use law. It's the reason I became a land use attorney. There, there's, there's no bright-line answer. The court, Supreme Court has been very clear that when it comes to making that distinction, we know it when we see it. So that leaves us all here down in the trenches, having to guess. Couple of things we know for sure. Central Oregon Land Watch has lost on every complaint and objection it has raised to what's going on here for years. We put a partial list of the issues they lost on at the end of our hearing letter. And so those have been cribbed into the staff report. So Central Oregon Land Watch is down to this one last tiny little issue having to do with, will there be a small number of employees? You don't have to revisit, as they would like you to do, this bigger whole question of, well, let's talk about what's urban and what's rural. All you have to do at this point is talk about number of employees and make the case, small or more than small. The number 90, to some people, is going to sound like a big number, and to other people, it's going to sound like a small number. I would just suggest that you, you, when you're answering that question, you have to answer relative to something. Well, what's it relative to? Well, you know, it's relative to how many acres you're dealing with. You've got 20 acres here. It comes out to 4.2 employees per acre, assuming all of them show up at the same time for a big party. That's really a pretty small number if you compare it to what goes on in urban areas. If you go to an urban area and you, you have 20 acres staked out, you've got a heck of a lot more employees than 90. Central Oregon Land Watch suggests that if you have more than zero or one employee. Central Oregon Land Watch suggests that if you have more than zero or one employees, then you're urban. I've proved that in the testimony this morning. So again, I would just, and we can talk about this more in our subsequent submittals, but we don't have to revisit, it's improper at this point to revisit the global metaphysical question of what's urban versus what's rural. We're down to just the question of what's the number of employees and will it be a small number? You need to come up with some kind of a methodology for getting an answer. We think our methodology is proven, tested and defensible on appeal, which is likely coming. Thank you for getting rid of the procedural objections on the next appeal by continuing the hearing on this matter. And finally, just to reiterate, in our view, when this county went through the trouble of amending its planning code such that we now have a rural industrial zone that lists uses allowed outright, and the county submitted that to the state for acknowledgement and the state blessed it with holy water, what that amounted to was a commitment by the state that any uses that are allowed outright in this rural industrial zone are by definition as a matter of law rural in nature. That's why we go through the acknowledgement process. That is our backup theory. You made findings in round one on that. They weren't clear enough for Luba. We hope that, we expect the county can be even more clear in round two. Thank you. Look forward to submitting more information for the June hearing. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Klos. Mr. Oseti, is there any time left? I can't see the clock. Did you want to make any more comments? Oh, there's a couple of minutes left. Are you fine?
I would say, I'd like to make a little closing.
Sure.
Thank you, Tony Oseti. I, I'm happy that the board realized that there's a dimensional standards and we already alluded to the fact that the worst case scenario was approximately 10 buildings on 20 acres. That's about a half an acre a piece. One thing that wasn't talked about is the soils analysis also shows that there's a limited amount of space for septic systems that could house thousands of employees. You couldn't do that. That could only be accomplished through a urban setting with sewer. We're not allowed to have sewer. It's not planned to have sewer on this property. It's rural. And also Ms. Macbeth's statement about eight employees in urban setting, and I think you've got the gist of that, that, you know, she didn't put a quantitation of square foot per employee, per square foot of a building. But I believe in the materials that Mr. Baseman supplied, there is a square footage building area per, per, per person. So all these things, you've grasped the big picture, 20 acres. If you can have eight people, and I'm glad that you brought it up, Commissioner DeBonne, that, you know, what is the size of eight people? She could not tell, but if Willamette Greystone has 65, apparently what she spoke of, they have about 6.4 acres of Willamette Greystone. So that's a, what, 10 people per, I mean, per acre. So.
Didn't sound like those are all.
It will be, will be relative. Pardon?
It didn't sound like those were all located across the street.
Yes, and they're in the area. Yes, and there are no commercial farms. I'm a commercial farmer and there's, during harvest time, if you, if you are harvesting, not in this area, but in the valley, if you're harvesting strawberries, you're going to have hundreds of people in a five acre parcel harvesting strawberries at any one time. So, you know, we're not comparing apples to oranges, but again, the limitations of soils, this is a limited issue based on employees of the area. What's the worst case plausible scenario? I think she helped us make our case by saying eight employees in Bend and 90 equates to four people times 20 is about 80. We're over the threshold. We're just, everything's making sense here. I thank you for your time. If you have any more questions for Mr. Baseman, that, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Or for me.
Yeah, following that, you follow, following that consideration about the, the soil, soil constraints and wastewater capacity in the area, it would also be really useful to see, you know, based on, on the, you know, the, on, on the soil characteristics across your property, like a total maximum estimated amount of septic capacity. You know, how many people's worth of septic capacity can you get into that property? Cause, you know, that, if that is close to the 90 number, then that, that's helpful to understand. And if, if it's more or less than the 90 number, that would be helpful to understand. You know, the, the, the concern that there's nothing that prohibits you from putting in a bunch of 7,500 square foot buildings. I, I, you know, and that kind of calls into question your worst case scenario. I, I thought that that was a, a fair concern, but this, this septic capacity, you know, kind of constraint may reinforce that, you know, you really just can't put that many people into this area.
Right. Well, and I'm glad you brought that up. The setbacks, I think there's even solar setbacks. Now remember, this is, I think that our traffic engineer also stated that the uses in the area that are there now that we are using as comparatives, it, it's, it's not about how many people we can get into a building, but we did allude to the, the fact that in a worst case scenario, there would be approximately 10 businesses. I know through my memory of the soil analysis, that there was only one or two areas that would actually support a standard septic system. And now we have the sand system, sand filter systems. And I'm not a, this, I'm saying, I'm just, this is just common knowledge as a 64 year old man. You can have several sand filters, which standard septic systems take a lot more area and then now you have to have backup sand systems or standard systems. From my experience of understanding downtown Tumalo, there's a sewer system problem there and they've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in a, in a, in a sewer system filtration field, system for the building that the coffee shop is involved in and that offices. There's some things that are practical and some things are not. What the resource here is, is that we have poor soils, a need for industrial types of, of warehousing or uses, the things that have been accepted. And through the best of our knowledge and the testimony and, and the green book, the way that the whole country establishes amount of people being used in a specific use on a rural or even sub semi, they don't even have it for rural and we've just taken up the, the suburban area numbers. It all falls in place, but I, I don't want to elaborate unless you have any more questions, but I'm just saying there are.
I just, Mr. Oseti, I just need to say that the clock quit working at 2:55 and I did start mine, but Sharon, if you could readjust the clock? I don't know.
Well, I was just answering. We're asking questions at this.
Thank you.
Right.
And I'm just saying there are limitations onsite parking. You're nowhere, you're going to get 100 plus buildings on there and have the requirements of the space, the parking. I will, will answer these questions and as time goes by. Thank you so much.
It would, I mean, just on that septic question, if someone could do some, crunch some numbers and, and we could see that before the, you know, before June 8th, that, that, I think that's actually pretty relevant information for, for consideration here.
Thank you. Based on standard, standard type of, 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 of septic systems or I know, I think a sand, a sand filter system requires less area, but I think that would still be applicable. I, I know that we've talked about, about 10 businesses so far to come up with our number for 90. So we will, I will be adding some information based on the plausible septic ability that would.
Yeah.
I'll do some DEQ work for you. Thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Nicole, is, are there any closing comments you would like to make today?
Chair and Commissioners, I think the only comment that I would like to share is, you know, thank you for your acknowledgement of the request for the continued public hearing, both the oral and the written portion of it. And an abundance of caution, staff is also planning to mail the notice of public hearing to all those withstanding on this item. So I just wanted to share that with you so that you know when you, you make that formal motion of what our next steps would be.
Okay.
And all those with, withstanding, does that include, you know, basically anyone who ever submitted a public comment on this?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Does it include the neighborhood also?
It only includes those who provided comments or participated in the public hearing. So those who have formal standing.
Okay.
So I do support that, you know, of keeping the oral and written record open for this hearing to at least June 8th, I think is the concept here.
So.
Do we need to formally?
Yeah, could we have a motion then, please?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, if you just move to continue the public hearing, keep the record and the oral portion of the hearing open. What I presume would happen is we would just reconvene similar to today. We'd give the, the applicant an ability to present any information that they might have and the appellant an opportunity to present whatever it is they have and then some brief rebuttal. So it'd almost be a redo of today and then you'll have to decide at that point if, if you're done and what you're going to do with the open record period beyond that.
So is the June 8th date certain or no earlier than?
That's the, the meeting that falls on day 21. So I might just confirm with Sharon, I believe I checked about a month ago if you were open on June 8th, but I'm curious if there are any conflicts in the board's schedule.
No, the 15th of June is, is a problem. So June 8th does work in my estimation. So is that a motion then?
So moved if I can do it like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Commissioner, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So we will reconvene then on June 8th for this. Hopefully Sharon, it will be in our schedule.
And that'll be a nine o'clock meeting, not like eight o'clock.
Yes, it will be nine o'clock hopefully that day.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I believe we next have on our agenda, the Public Health Advisory Board Minimum Care Advisory for Homeless. I know we saw them yesterday, but I believe they may be on Zoom. And there they are on Zoom.
Good morning, everyone. Good coverage in the media yesterday too.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners, for having us here today. I'm Tom Coon, Community Health Manager at Deschutes County Public Health, and one of my duties is coordinating the Public Health Advisory Board, also known as FAB. And one of the duties FAB is charged with is informing the Commissioners about health issues that are in need of attention. Today I'm joined by some FAB members who recently formed a subcommittee and they've created a document which can be used as a guide for the Commissioners to reference when they must make decisions regarding the homeless population in Deschutes County. They would now like to share their findings from that document and I will turn it over to the subcommittee to begin their introductions and presentation. So Dave, if you could kick it off?
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Tom. Commissioners, thank you very much for allowing us to testify today and to present our paper and information to you. I also have Dr. Peter Bohm and Colleen Sinski, I think is joining us as well. So with that, I'd like to start sharing the slides, if I may. Give me just a second to, to set those up. So you've probably seen the paper as well as the slides. Apologies, we'll have some of these slides out of order from what you previously had, but they're all there. As you know, homelessness, homelessness is a priority for the FAB this year. We've done some research that we want to share with you. I'm not going to read through all the slides, but I'll try to give you some time to sort of look at them as we go. The key point to this slide is each year we have more unhoused homeless, no additional places to put them, and there are worldwide standards for basic health needs of water, toilets and sanitation as identified in the Sphere document of 2018. These are public health needs we identify as important with our recommendations. We will present the background and then review these again at the end of our presentation. These decisions are yours and the county staff to make for a successful program if you choose. What we are covering is the minimum health needs based on published standards for water, toilets and other health areas.
As usual, when budgeting for something, the cost is not the cost. Some expense is paid for by other entities such as inappropriate or delayed medical care. Some of the cost is of the kick the can variety. For example, we can expect that homeless children can look forward to more cancer, hypertension, heart disease and diabetes than children raised in more fortunate settings and that they will also suffer more mental illness and behavior problems.
This is the definition of literally homelessness and this is for reference and it comes from the HUD department. You can read that at a later point if you like. We don't intend to reinvent the wheel since there are many worldwide organizations responding to the care of homelessness. As we mentioned, the Sphere document and the link to the Sphere document is in the accompanying paper and it'll be later in the slide. The key to this particular slide shows homelessness over the years. It's not going away. It seems to be increasing each year. On the bright spot, with a concentrated effort by a great many of local organizations, we were able to reduce veterans homelessness. Unfortunately, even that was only half. So this, I have two graphs here, which were put together by our team. The graph on the left shows a red line that steadily increases and that's unsheltered homeless. Those are people living in tents, vehicles, doorways on the street. The other point that I would make is that the blue line or the blue area at the bottom of the graph are shelter beds. And we can see that it hasn't increased appreciably over the years. The yellow line shows those people utilizing the shelter beds. So we're using everything that we have. We have a greater need. The graph on the right shows the rank order, 5% of regional homeless populations sleeping without shelter. If you notice on the very bottom, the gray is the national average at 39% without shelter. You'll notice that Oregon's a little higher than that, it's 61% without shelter. And then in Central Oregon, we have 76% without shelter.
But Dave, I just, Dave, I just want to interrupt that Colleen is on the Zoom. So just for your information, if you need her to cover.
Yes. Yes. So this is the area of water sanitation and health. This graph, the graphic on the right comes from the Sphere document. These, Sphere is an international conga, association that works on minimum stand. These Sphere is an international association that works on minimum standards for refugee and displaced populations. What we took from the Sphere was water supply, excretion management, vector control, drainage, hygiene promotion, and healthcare services. These are the need and requirements for water. These may be obvious. Getting water to the camps and individuals will be a real challenge in some locations. These are the needs and requirements for toilets. Surprisingly, many homeless avoid drinking water to avoid urinating in the street. Again, these may be obvious requirements, but getting these to the camps and individuals will be even more of a challenge. These are the measures for vector control. It's important to keep these down to prevent spreading disease. These are the requirements for drainage. These also may be obvious. Keeping water away is important to keep people dry and to reduce insect populations. These are the requirements for hygiene. A real problem among homeless is the loss of prescriptions during sweeps and the theft of prescription drugs when they leave their tent or their location. This is also an important issue in medical care, especially for chronic illnesses that are being treated.
There's actually a lot of healthcare being delivered to the homeless in Deschutes County, but it's not well organized or coordinated. We think that the more coordination and leadership of service, record keeping, and follow-up, the better.
Until we have the capacity to house the homeless, we should meet these basic health needs. In summary, we ask the Commissioners to recognize these needs. And I thank the Commissioners for being able to present this morning and to open it up for discussion and questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Definitely, the numbers have been increasing. And I know Colleen Thomas and I independently last summer felt that we had about 1,500 homeless in our county. So, you know, the fact that the count at, you know, in January was as high as it was is incredibly significant. And then the number of children, now this chart actually is saying that children under 18 went down from the prior year. And yet, what is it, we have 110 children on the list. I'd heard in the community, people were talking about 200 children that were homeless. Do you have any further information on that?
I do not have an update on that. There was some new information that came out from the last point in time count. Some of the numbers, some of the published categories were not necessarily the same from previous years. I know that, you know, in working with JW over at the Veterans Outreach, you know, a lot of people really hide during the point in time counts because they don't want to be identified. You know, what we're seeing sometimes is upwards of 40% under count.
You know, excuse me.
I don't have an update on the childhood things, Commissioner.
I made an error because it's the 22 numbers aren't here. I know we've seen them.
Oh, let me let me pull up that slide if I may.
Right, because I believe that those numbers said to like 200 again, that we had 203 in 2020. Do you have those available, David?
Let me let me see if I can bring those up again. I apologize for doing this.
The number of the number of 200 homeless children that I've heard has been from Ben Lapine School District, and it includes kids who are, you know, couch surfing, doubling up, and so it wouldn't.
Well, it has 223 on the point in time count. So thank you for doing that. I'll transfer these numbers over.
Yes, apologies. When when our subcommittee put together the numbers, we didn't have the 22 numbers available at the time. And we were able to add those just recently.
Okay.
And we'll certainly provide these to to Tom, these slides to Tom, so that the Commissioners can receive these updated slides as well.
When you when you had the number of beds on your chart, I was wondering, I know we allocated funding for 88 beds in Redmond at Bethlehem Inn. Now, I know that those beds all haven't been put into to effect yet, but have you added those to your chart at all? I see it goes through 2021.
Commissioner O'Dea, thanks for asking. I'm Colleen Sinski, the Executive Director of Central Oregon Hughes and a FAB member. And so these numbers come from the annual point in time count and its partner, the annual housing inventory count. And at the time that I put these numbers together, we didn't have those beds from the new Bethlehem Inn Shelter in Redmond included in that housing inventory count. So that resource isn't included here yet, and it will make a difference. So, yeah, I appreciate the Commissioners allocating funding for that. But yeah, not included in these numbers yet.
Okay, well, it'll truly be significant because at least it'll move it up a bit, you know, so.
A little bit. My other question about this this chart is that we see a drop in 2020. I'm guessing maybe that is because of COVID safety guidelines. And I guess I'm the key question is, has that rebound, have we reclaimed that space as the pandemic comes under control? Like, you know, so if a certain amount of, for lack of a better word, if a certain amount of density had to go offline because of COVID, is that shelter capacity back online at this point? Or are we still concerned about, you know, people congregating at those densities and we have not brought that capacity back online yet?
That's a great question, Commissioner Chang. You're right in that the dip in the shelter numbers in 2020 were because of having to depopulate for social distancing protocol. The numbers in 2021 have not quite rebounded up to where our 2019 numbers were. But as far as what that looks like going forward and whether all resources were correctly accounted for, given the social distancing measures, would probably be something we'd have to go back and ask the experts, like the Homeless Leadership Coalition. And Colleen Thomas would have information about that. So as far as I know, that is why the dip happened. And I'm not sure yet that we've been able to fully reclaim, but we're on track to.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and we're four months of the way to the next point in time count, too. So maybe we'll maybe some of this will be more clear in January 2023.
This is great information. I think it'd be, you know, wonderful input to the Joint Office homelessness as we start to talk about this countywide. There's also the statewide kind of concept of what are we going to do? Because if any one jurisdiction puts resources and, you know, efforts in place, it's really gonna, you know, just kind of move the move the field a little bit on people. You know, I think of even solid waste opportunities there. You know, there's the there's going to be a big difference between driving around to random rural camp locations and looking for solid waste or having solid waste drop off opportunities for people that, you know, either free or minimal cost. Lot of moving parts in there.
What this, I mean, what this?
Well, I was just I was just going to add to Commissioner DeBohn's observation. You know, one of the things that we wanted to make sure was in our report and in these slides is some actual numbers that come from the Sphere document so that you can sort of size, based on pit counts, the size of the needs for water sanitation and other services that you would like to provide.
The question that these this that this framing of minimum standards of care begs for me is where are we going to provide these basic services? You know, because as as Commissioner DeBohn was just saying, trying to go around, you know, dispersed unauthorized camp locations and collect trash from people is is not necessarily very efficient. But the only way we get past that is by having authorized places, authorized, organized places where people can go and having those types of locations, both, in my opinion, both outdoor and indoor shelters set up, makes the provision of of care and the provision of services much more efficient. And, you know, it, I think it would take a lot of stress and strain off of our homeless service providers, giving them a little bit of predictability and hopefully a little bit of, you know, concentrated service delivery location to work with.
Maybe like a campground. So and I bring that up because it's been discussed a few times. You know, there are some rural parcels, the land use system in Oregon, you know, puts definition how that happens. But, I mean, if we can put campgrounds in and even not even low barrier situations, just market rate or, you know, subsidized opportunities for people, that's where somebody could settle in, you know, get services if they want, you know, either pay a fair market price or be sponsored by, you know, whoever, a church or nonprofit or, you know, some people have revenue too and income streams that are they could be utilized for for that opportunity. Yeah, so campgrounds come around again.
And I want to acknowledge that the veterans number is the lowest number we've seen since to back to 2015. And I want to acknowledge our Veterans Village. I know three homeless veterans have already moved on to transitional housing from there, and we only opened it, I believe, November 15th. So I'm extremely proud of having the village here in Bend. We, you know, we have what of 15,000 veterans in Deschutes County. And truly, to serve these that are homeless and make that transition for their lives, I think it's really, it's a great thing. So, you know, I've always been told by JW that we had over 100 people, veterans homeless. So this this number always seems to be a bit low, maybe just because they didn't want to be in the count. I mean, Colleen, you're shaking your head. Is that what you've heard, too?
I think that the point in time count is notoriously difficult. I've tried to shift to calling it more of a survey, like getting a slice. But given the logistical challenges and trying to cover an area the size of the state of Massachusetts and count individuals who don't necessarily want to be surveyed with their personal information, it's hard to project from this about what the accurate number would be. But I think that folks like JW with COVO probably have the best information. Thanks, Commissioner O'Dea.
No, thank you. So are there any other comments this morning?
This is a great reference point, is to say thank you so much. You know, being able to pull a piece of paper out and say, these are the best practices, you know, internationally or nationally or, you know, what's going to be the culture here in central Oregon, very valuable to have this information. And this is a public setting. So this is another one of those building blocks to a solution.
Yeah, I really appreciate the framing of of these needs as minimum standards of care for people in our community. And I think putting the public health lens on it is is really helpful. And it's a it's a good way to, you know, it's a good way to it to focus focus in and look at the problem from a slightly different angle. So much appreciated.
Yes. Thank you so much for setting up this advisory care group. I am, it is truly significant when you consider that Oregon has the second most homeless in the nation after California. So we really do have an, we have a responsibility to our fellow men. And I thank you for this. So.
Thank you, Commissioners. I also wanted to point out that, like JW, there are many organizations within the county that are trying to provide many of these services. You know, there's they work very, very hard on on this. And hopefully, this document will be able to be used to to help with those efforts and to to provide that minimum care. And I greatly appreciate the Commissioners' time today to be able to present this. And I appreciate Dr. Peter Bohm and Colleen Sinski as members of this homeless subcommittee.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, everyone, for joining us today. We appreciate it.
And thanks again to the FAB for organizing that excellent Health Heroes event yesterday, which allowed us to recognize some of the some of the exceptional people in our community and organizations in our community that are helping to maintain the public health.
Yes, thank you very much for being there.
And thank you for the lovely lunch, Tom.
Yes, I wish more people would have had some of it.
Yes, it was a beautiful day, amazing day. So. All right, we are now at item number nine. Chair signature. Pamela? There she is. Good morning, Pamela.
Good morning. Good to see you again.
A long time.
Every day this week so far.
I know, I know. I don't know who's the lucky, the lucky person. You guys or me?
Yep.
Well, it's a toss up.
All around.
All right, this one shouldn't take too long. So for the record, I'm Pamela Ferguson, one of the Public Health Program Managers with Deschutes County Health Services. I'm here today to seek your consideration and approval of document number 2022-404, which is OHA Amendment Number 157345-1. And you hopefully have a copy of that. And I'll just start with a little background because this one's a little complicated. And I think it's the fourth time that I've I've come to the board to talk about this program. But I'll do my best. Most of our teams, and you guys might know this, have the ability to bill Medicaid for client encounters or visits. So we've got nurse home visitors that go out into homes and do a visit, come back, and they can bill for that encounter. It's straightforward fee-for-service approach, and it allows us to earn revenue for almost every visit that we provide. At the state, that's called targeted case management. And we bring in, depending on the year, it could be $500,000 to $700,000 in Medicaid revenue that covers mainly the salary of our teams. There's another program now called the federal, through the federal Medicaid program, that allows us to get reimbursed for non-billable activities. And that program is called the Federal Financial Participation Program, or FFP. So again, we've got a revenue stream that's billable, and then this is a secondary program that allows us to bring in some funding that is for non-billable activities. We call that program Medicaid Administrative Claiming. Here, our teams call it MAC, M-A-C. So essentially, we participate in quarterly time studies. And we are randomly notified by our consultant at the state four times a quarter. We're given a date, okay, tomorrow's going to be a MAC day. And everyone that's in that cause pool has to fill out a time study piece of paper. It's a part goes in a web-based system, part is documented on actually a piece of paper in 15-minute increments. And oh, by the way, we had a MAC day yesterday, so I got to fill out my time study. And so did the rest of the home visiting team and the perinatal care team. So the good news is, we're then reimbursed by OHA for all of these non-billable Medicaid administrative activities. And some of those activities would be like outreach, healthcare coordination, application assistance. assistance, referrals, so things that the nurses are doing and the coordinators are doing in between a billable visit. So the good news is, this program typically brings in $80,000 to $90,000 per quarter. So that is, what, $320,000, let me do my math here, $360,000 a year, which really helps keep our program sustainable. So it's not uncommon for OHA to reach out with an amendment to increase thresholds. So that's why I'm here today. Amendment number one is basically increasing the not-to-exceed amount of our current contract with OHA by $850,000. So it will go from $1.5 million to $2.35 million as the threshold on this contract that we use to get reimbursed for this non-billable work. And that agreement is effective through June 30, 2023. So once we get to that termination date, we will renew that contract with OHA. So today, it's just an amendment, just a request for your approval to sign this amendment so we can increase the threshold, so we can bring in more revenue for our teams.
So Pamela, so Pamela, increasing the not-to-exceed amount by $850,000, it doesn't mean that we're, that instead of getting $80,000 to $90,000 per year, we're going to get $850,000. It just means that we could go above the $80,000 or $90,000 typical.
Correct. And what happens is, the consultant keeps an eye on all the counties and how much we're bringing in every quarter, and then he'll, he'll take a look and say, uh-oh, I think Deschutes is going to exceed that contract limit, so I'm going to, I'm going to send an amendment through so we can, we can increase that amount. So that's good news. When this happens, I'm always really excited. I'm like, good, that means we're doing a great job.
The other thing I'm trying to understand is, so these non-Medicaid billable services, are we providing these, in some cases, to the same person that we're also providing some Medicaid billable services? Or are there people in two different tracks here? People who get non-Medicaid billable services and other people who get Medicaid billable services?
Typically, it would be the same client. And I think that the nurse has to prepare before she goes out on a visit, so that time that she's prepping counts as non-billable administrative work. So somebody at the state came up with this, this program, and I think there was just some federal dollars sitting there, and they said, you know what, we can, we can send this down to the state and they can claim it by showing us that they, they're helping support this program. And so, yeah, it's, this program has been around a long time, and, but you're right, it could be the same client. The nurse preps for that visit on a MAC day, she would claim that time as non-billable, and then that day she would go out and do a visit, and she could bill for that visit. And again, this is just 12 times a year that we take this snapshot. We don't do this every day, luckily, because it, it does take a little bit of time to sit down and, and look at what you did every 15 minutes for eight straight hours.
I'm also trying to figure out, I'm, I, I feel like we hear about this same concept, you know, there's the Medicaid billable services and the non-Medicaid billable services over at Behavioral Health. And I'm trying to figure out how, what, what, what program titles and, and labels we use over there. And maybe this is what the CCBHC program accomplishes over at Behavioral.
Commissioner Chang, I think what they do is a little different than this. This one's very specific to our targeted case management programs. And I believe the schools are able to claim some time for the work that they do at the, at the district level, supporting clients, perhaps a school nurse.
Right, okay.
But I think this is very different than what CCBHC, non, the, the work that's not billable.
Right, right. I mean, yeah, the, the issue is definitely similar, that, in that there's Medicaid billable and Medicaid non-billable services, and how do you pay for that?
So Pam, the bottom.
Just a different program, yes.
So the bottom line is, since there's this increase, does that mean that they're going to pay more than the $90,000 per quarter?
If, if we're able to show.
That we've done, we've done the work?
Yes, then we, we could definitely get more than that each quarter. They're just assuming that we're going to, we're going to break through that threshold before we get to June 30, 2023.
Okay, because it is a significant increase, if it's going up by $850,000. So that means you're going to be extremely busy.
Well, it looks like this is part of a biennium agreement, so billing quarterly for $80,000 to $90,000 is, it may go up, but it'll just kind of scale into itself. So we're going to finish this, this fiscal year and then use this all of next fiscal year.
Correct. Right, so in two years, we could, we could get to $700,000.
Yep.
Or even $800,000, depending on our time studies. So, right, it would only take a couple of years to, to get through that $850.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move approval of Chair Signature of Document 2022-404, OHA Agreement. Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Thank you. We'll see you tomorrow.
Have a great day, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have our second public hearing of the morning. Thank you, Tarek.
Wasn't sure if we changed the order at all, so appreciate your time. And yeah, for the record, Tarek Rawlings, I'm an associate planner with the Community, Community Development Department. And before you, today is a public hearing, and actually I have a quick script for you, Chair Dare. I'll give you that.
Thank you. This is the time and place set for hearing on File Number 247-22-000243-V, a request by the County Road Department for a nighttime noise variance to construct bridge approach repairs and pavement rehabilitation on Tumalo Road and Deschutes Market Road between Tumalo Place and 19th Street. The staff will outline the hearing procedure that will be followed.
Sure, and I think before we go too much further, we do have the applicant, I believe, might be on the line, we'd have Cody Smith and, or a representative from the Road Department there.
There's Cody.
And I'm happy to go through the full procedure to open the record, I believe, but then I think the intent today is to continue this hearing until June 1st, so we'll kind of get to that point. But I'll let Mr. Smith here speak for himself if he wanted to.
Yeah, I'd recommend, let's just go ahead and open up the hearing and then I can talk.
According to our documentation, it says they want the work to begin June 1st.
Correct, that's kind of the range that's been applied for. I think procedurally, we're just trying to make sure there was enough notice provided, and so.
Okay.
The intent of this continuance, exactly. So I think with that, I'll just read through these procedures, but I intend to kind of go through these again on June 1st at that time and with a full presentation. So if that's any kind of indication for our next meeting, that's, it'll be largely the same opening process. So with that, I'll just kind of continue with my piece here. So the hearing's body, the Board of County Commissioners in this case, will take testimony and receive written evidence today if there are any folks that are here to give any testimony, and I believe there wouldn't be anything preventing them from providing that testimony today. And this is, again, a request for a nighttime noise variance to construct bridge approach repairs and pavement rehabilitation on Tumalo Road and Deschutes Market Road between Tumalo Place and 19th Street. The applicant, Deschutes County Road Department, is requesting this variance to construct those repairs and pavement rehab, beginning no sooner than June 1st and to be completed no later than August 31st of 2022, and they propose the work to take about three weeks in total. All testimony shall be directed to the hearing's body, and at the conclusion of the hearing, the hearing's body will deliberate towards a decision or continue the hearing or deliberations to a date and time certain. The hearing will proceed as follows. Staff will explain Zoom, telephone, and in-person participation. Staff will then provide a brief report. The applicant will then present its testimony and evidence. Any appellants will then present their testimony and evidence. And then any opponents and proponents will present, any other opponents or proponents will present their evidence and testimony. And then other, any other interested persons can prevent, present testimony after then the opponents or proponents.
And I might add, the, these, what we're going through now, this protocol is as applicable, so there aren't any appellants at this point in time. It's, so it's just going to be if anybody opposes it or not.
Good clarification. And just for the record, I've not received any comments to the state in support or in opposition. And then if requested by the hearing's body, oh, excuse me, the applicant, as the party bearing the burden of proof, will then be afforded an opportunity to present rebuttal testimony. And then if requested by the hearing's body, staff will provide any closing comments. To comply with House Bill 2560, the hearing will also be conducted using Zoom. For in-person participants during public testimony, please raise your hand if you'd like to testify, and then state your first and last name and mailing address for the record. I don't know if there are any folks in the room, doesn't look like we have any that are testifying in person today. So for Zoom participants, there are two categories, you're either a panelist or an attendee. An attendee can view a panelist, but they're not shown on video, they do not have audio access until they're promoted to a panelist. Panelists are on video and they have control of their audio. Some important tools to be aware of is the mute button to the left of the screen that will turn your audio on and off, and there's also a video button near there that is similarly turns off your video, turns it on and off. You may want to turn off your audio or video if you need to confer with legal counsel or anyone else, any kind of sensitive comments or images that you might not want recorded into the record of this public hearing. And there's also a raise hand feature, which is especially important to indicate whether you'd like to testify or to ask questions. So the, you'll see those buttons in your Zoom layout there. For telephone attendees, the, you'll need to push star six in order to mute or unmute your audio. And similarly, you'll need to push star nine in order to raise your hand, just like the Zoom participants, in order to indicate whether you'd like to testify or to ask any questions. At the time of public hearing, please raise your hand using the button or by pressing star nine. And then at that time, you'll be elevated from an attendee to a panelist, and your audio will be unmuted. At that time, that's when you'll be able to provide testimony. At the conclusion of the testimony, the panelist will be returned to an attendee status, and their audio will be muted. Then the next person will be selected, and the process will repeat until all those participating by computer have testified. For written material, in addition to the oral testimony, if anyone has written testimony to submit, please provide that to me. If you are in person, please submit your written testimony to me prior to beginning your testimony. If you're participating remotely, you can submit your written testimony via email. My email address is on, I can provide that, and it's provided in the, the meeting packets, but I'll also provide some more clear information for the full public hearing, I think on the first is going to be a little more open. And then, please keep in mind that if your submittal is more than 20 pages in length or includes color figures or includes documents that need to be printed larger than an eight and a half by 11-inch size, then you'll also need to submit a hard copy in addition to that electronic copy. At this time, I'm going to ask if there are any objections to the format of the hearing. If yes, please use the raise hand feature or just raise your hand or push star nine in order to indicate whether you have an objection to that hearing format. And there is no one on Zoom, so no phone or Zoom attendees, and there's no one in person indicating that they are here to testify on behalf of this particular file or public hearing. And so I'll put the script back to you, Chair Dare.
Okay, did you want to say that we?
Oh, excuse me, sorry. A full written version of the hearing procedures are available at the table at the side of the room. And Commissioners must disclose any ex parte contacts prior to hearing observations, biases, or, or, excuse me, prior hearing observations, biases, or conflicts of interest. And there you are, Chair Dare.
Thank you. Does any Commissioner have anything to disclose? And if so, please state the nature of same and whether you can proceed. Commissioner DeBonne?
Just acknowledging, this is the, kind of the full meal deal hearing procedure for a noise variance for the Road Department, so I have no conflicts. This is the outreach opportunity for the community to hear about, we may be making noise in a few evenings this summer. And I have no conflicts officially.
Okay, Commissioner?
I have no conflicts and can proceed.
And I have no conflicts. The Board has disclosed no conflicts. And does any party wish to challenge any Commissioner, member of the hearing's body based on ex parte contacts, biases, or conflicts? Okay, okay, as I see, no challenges are presented prior to opening the hearing. Does anyone have any procedural objections to the public hearing? And I guess I don't see any of those either. Seeing none, the hearing is now open. Staff will proceed with a brief staff report.
And I, I think that I'll, I'll leave this portion to Cody Smith at this time to potentially just formally request that continuance if that's the next step at this moment.
Cody, you have the floor.
Okay, yeah, so Board, I guess just real quickly, as, as we discussed with the Board last week in the work session, the Road Department's made application, we submitted this application back in early March for a nighttime noise variance permit for some paving work we have planned on Tumalo Road and Deschutes Market Road in the Deschutes Junction area, right around the Deschutes Junction interchange. This is a, one of our highest traffic volume roads. We see traffic volumes pushing 10,000 vehicles per day on this section of road, which necessitates the need to do this paving work at night, paving work and also some guardrail repair In the shuffle here, the, the notice that the Community Development Department sent to Road Department staff to put up our land use notice posting got lost, and so we were two days late in getting our land use notice put up to meet the 10-day notice criteria. So with that, Board, we are asking for this hearing to be continued to the next available Board meeting, which would be the June 1st Board meeting, so we could wrap this up. Yeah, the comment was made earlier, on, in our application, we did ask for the, the start of this noise variance permit to begin on June 1st. We, we don't actually anticipate starting work on June 1st. We're still developing our, our bid documents for this project. We don't anticipate, presently, we don't anticipate work will start till probably after July 1st.
Okay, thank you, Cody, for the clarification then on why we should have a motion for a continuance until June 1st in order to adequately do the land use postings. So is there a motion then from the Board?
I can make a motion. Would it be for the file number or for the document number?
I would suggest that it be the file number that, that the public hearing on file number, there it is, be continued till June 1st.
So I move that the public hearing for File Number 247-22-000243-V continue until, I'm sorry, what was the date then?
June 1st.
Until June 1st.
I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. Okay, so Cody, we will see you again then on June 1st.
Yes, you will.
And thank you, Tarek.
Thank you very much. Y'all see you June 1st. Appreciate your time, Commissioners.
No, thank you.
I'd like to take just a few moment break before we get to the last item.
Oh, sure, a break.
Yeah, there we go, thank you. Yeah, there we go. Thank you.
I'm sure. Okay, reconvening. Tanya, item number 11.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Tanya Salzman, senior planner. I'm just fussing with my Zoom so I can share my screen if you bear with me for a moment. All right. Technology. I'm here to provide a brief update about our wildlife inventory update project. I know, I'm mindful of your time. I know you have a hard stop, I believe at 11, but my anticipation is this will be done-
Plenty of time, yeah.
This will be done well before that. I, my intention here is to just give you an overview of kind of our, the really basic concepts and the timeline of the actual project, rather than kind of diving into the individual details of what we're, what we're going to propose, or what we think we're going to propose as a draft document later in the summer. So just a check-in essentially. This has been a long time coming, as the board is aware. The first phase of the project, which was, which ended at this time last year, allowed us to gauge public interest in the general concept of wildlife inventory updates for three different habitats, three different inventories, excuse me. Ultimately, after several check-ins and updates, the board directed staff to pursue a mule deer winter range inventory update. And so we have been working diligently in the background to prepare draft amendments and draft findings. As I've probably noted before, the process for updating a GOAL 5 wildlife inventory, A, is not done almost ever at a county level, because counties aren't required to revisit this. So in theory, you could have an inventory that exists from the 90s, which we do, and just let it stay there forever. But we're choosing, based on the board direction, to pursue this update. And the process is governed by Oregon administrative rules. And there's, I can refer you to the chapter if you would like, many pages of reading, but it really delineates the, the process by which uses are deemed to be conflicting or not conflicting, and how you determine the area and all of these things. So it's very, very rigorous. So staff has been working on that, preparing this findings document that will be ultimately released to the, to the board, the planning commission, the public, the rest of the universe, really. So that's what we're doing right now. Let's see. So, I'll just give a super broad brush summary of kind of what that entails, what that looks like. The amendments are going to update the comprehensive plan by describing the mule deer winter range update. It's going to update county code, the actual zoning text. It's creating a new wildlife area combining zone. So this is an overlay zone. So it's literally going to be creating a shape, a new border on the map. And then the text of the comprehensive plan, as well as the zoning code, will describe what you can and cannot do, and, you know, typical zoning code things within that new boundary. The existing wildlife area combining zone boundaries will remain the same, and we're just adding on to it. And the, the crux of it is, we're going to, the amendments will either allow, limit, or prohibit certain land uses that were determined to be conflicting, mostly by ODF&amp;W, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. There is a definition of conflicting use that I actually don't have right here, but it basically relies on kind of the, the level of disturbance. You know, ODF&amp;W believes that these, this list of uses, because of its high human use and disturbance, is conflicts with deer habitat. So they have relayed to us numerous uses over several periods of time. And staff will be in the process of kind of taking those uses that they have relayed to us, their recommendations, looking at them, interpreting them. Some of them have slightly different names over time, just due to changes in state law and kind of minutia of zoning code things. And then turning those into a list of conflicting uses that we will then run through what's called an EC analysis, which is prescribed by state law, which looks at the environmental, social, energy, and economic. I think I did those out of order. All of the E's are mixed up. But it's basically a decision-making process for determining what to do with each of those uses. It's meant to be just a tool. You're looking, we essentially are creating this matrix that looks at, you know, let's say one of the uses is solar farms. What are the social, positive, and negative consequences of allowing, limiting, or prohibiting? And then running that through, for every single use. We have approximately 20 of them. So it's a large, a large document.
Oh, yeah. I want to talk about it as we go here. I'm processing lots of-
A lot.
So we have an existing wildlife overlay.
Correct.
Is it for deer specifically?
It covers multiple species. There's a subset of it that covers mule deer. There's also parts of it that cover elk, and I believe sensitive birds, and I think some other things. Right. But we are concentrating on just, this new thing that we're doing is just additional mule deer.
So was the EC done for, for a bunch of these things back in the day also?
Back in the day, it was.
In the 1990s, like 92 or something?
I believe it was 92.
That's when everything was done, I think.
It's a lot. It's, we're learning that it's, it's quite a rigorous experience. I think it's a great tool. It's, it kind of, it makes you think. It just forces you to go through every single aspect and every kind of permutation of allowing, limiting, prohibiting for every possible use. So we're finding it valuable. It's, it's a large undertaking, but we're in the process of doing that.
And then the, the proposed prohibited uses by the name this Department of Fish and Wildlife are giving to us, the definitions would be put in our code in a more land use pattern? You know, so, you know, the terminology is, say, bed and breakfast, or fishing lodge, or, you know, some of these things, they, they may not be the terms we use in our county code. Is that what you were referring to?
In some cases, yeah. For instance, bed and breakfast is referred to as room and board arrangement in the EFU zone, due to a state, I believe it was a state decision that happened a while ago. So it's the same, effectively the same use, but we will make, we will clarify and make sure that it's very clearly delineated once we actually write the, the draft code to say what these, what these different meanings are and how we kind of translated those from ODF&amp;W's original-
So that'll kind of be a, a Deschutes County domain discussion on some of, well, maybe not, though, I guess. So another question, so the, the proposed, are these proposed prohibited uses, or this is the list that we need to define?
They're propos, so essentially, ODF&amp;W, over time, initially from the initial wildlife area combining zone, and then they had an interagency report in 2009, and then subsequent communications.
This is a mature set of topics that they feel are, are the places to be talking about.
Exactly. And so we, we took those recommendations and ran those through this analysis, or in the process of running that, through this analysis. And so on, on the other side, the, the names might have changed ever so slightly, and we will have a discussion of that in the findings. And that is based on our, our understanding of the recommendations from ODF&amp;W, as well as our understanding, staff's understanding of, of board priorities and board concerns. We are coming out with draft, draft amendments, draft prohibitions, limitations, and allowances, that, just to have something out there to present. And then the board, it'll be up to the board to, and the public, of course, as they weigh in through an extensive public process, to, to massage that and change it if they want to or accept it. We're just starting, this is the starting point, essentially. So it's nothing, we have to put something out there. So this is the, the first step in that, in that set of amendments.
Well, and I just, you know, throwing out ideas here, but I mean, the vision of, you know, green grass and a little bit of man-made development isn't, from my point of view, I'm just, you know, just throwing out ideas here, isn't a negative thing, you know? I'm looking at playgrounds and, you know, I mean, golf course obviously is a function of water, which is, that's a different scenario. But green grass in man-made settings, I don't know that is a negative thing. So I guess it'd be interesting, and for me, just to come up to speed about, you know, what, what are the impacts that are really changing the, you know, and, and maybe, just like, you know, here about, you know, feeding wild animals, you maybe don't want to do that sometimes. You want them to be able to naturally move back and forth between their, their summer and winter ranges, so maybe there's reasons we're doing this. But, yeah, I'm just letting, you know, that's what I'm thinking about as I'm looking at this.
Our goal is, in this, in this findings document, to explain things like that. You know, why are playgrounds a problem? You know, off the top of my head, a lot of it is, some of it is noise. You know, that can be-
We're getting the big antlers stuck in the chains of the swing set, or whatever it is, yeah.
That could be very unfortunate. Or, or perhaps the parking or the roads that are accessing, accessing that area.
Well, yeah, and if it's, if people are the problem, we don't want to do anything where people would congregate. That's, that's a concept, I mean.
And, people and, and vehicles, there's, you know, the big game is pretty sensitive to a lot of vehicle traffic. I mean, you set up a, you know, a playground or a park, and it's supposed to be a place that people, lots of people use, so there'd be a lot of cars coming and going.
Yeah. So just acknowledging, you know, the, what's driving some of these, as I'm thinking it through, yeah.
I really think that the deer I know in Sisters know when it's hunting season, because they all come in town. You can see, you know, a box with giant racks, and they are like right in town grazing. And I, I mean, I just know that they've, they've figured it out on a time wise, like, oh, you know what, I think the days are getting shorter, I better get to, better get in the city limits of Sisters, because that's where I'm going to be sighted. But there was actually, I don't know if I told you last week, the herd, it was like half the size of like the 200, maybe it was like 100 elk, right there by Highway 20. And then, of course, like a day later, when I drove, there was an elk that had been hit. So, but it, I've never really seen them, you know, in the last eight years, you know, in May, down in that spot. And yet, if you're reading in the paper that the wolves have come in to Camp Sherman, and I was hearing from someone that it's actually, they've split off from the Jefferson camp, or the Jefferson pack? I don't know. Maybe that's another rumor that's out there. So we'll have to do some more investigating.
Yeah, yeah. And our hope, as, as I think I've probably noted, that once we complete this mule deer inventory, that if there's success in that and, and support from the board and the public to continue with, with additional habitats in the future, that's in the future, but that's our goal. I just popped up on the screen, it's from our story map that we used in the first phase of the project, so it's a little bit tricky to see, but just a, a very general map of the existing mule deer winter range, which is the orange. And then the proposed, which is based on ODF&amp;W data and methodology, the proposed is in blue, just to give you a sense of where things are. So here in the center is Bend, I don't know if you can see that. It's a significant area. The new area is about 188,000 acres. Not all of that is, some of that is federal land, so not all of that is under county jurisdiction. About 75,000 acres of that, just about 40% is non-federal land. So that's what Deschutes County has control over and can touch with this, with this, these amendments. And this, this is available on our story map. If you want to play with it, you can kind of zoom in, and we will be developing further, this further for the next, for the public outreach part of this project. But I just wanted to pop that up there, to show it to you. It's, it's kind of fun to zoom around there. So, and now I will stop sharing it.
So you're really going to the, what, north side of Highway 20?
Sorry.
Well, I was just finally figuring out what I was looking at. I was like, okay.
Jump the gun there.
Sorry.
Yeah, a lot of it is, is, you know, north, north of Bend, I'll zoom out a little bit, east of Bend, a little bit south, southwest, and then a little bit down.
Okay, and then down, okay, right above lake? Okay.
Yeah.
While we're, while we're talking about the, the specific areas and the different, different uses and zones, so of the 188,000 new acres, almost 55,000 are zoned EFU. Do you have a sense within that, that 55,000 of EFU, how much is irrigated agriculture and how much is, you know, non-irr, you know, currently non-irrigated, either agricultural or, or, you know, other kinds of, you know, open space use?
We, right now at my fingertips, I do not, but that's something that I, I want to get the information for if possible.
Great, thank you.
And Commissioner Chang, one of the things we might be able to do is just lay over the irrigation district map on this, for example. That'll give some indication of where irrigation may occur.
Because I, I mean, I can just see from this map that there are places that, where there's, where there are irrigation districts and there's other places where there's not. Kind of going back to earlier discussions we've had about, you know, what is the value of land that was put into EFU, but which is not irrigated? I mean, that, you know, this, this inventory definitely indicates one of the values of maintaining that land as, you know, undeveloped, or putting it in some kind of more conservation-oriented category like EFU, even though we probably need a better one than EFU.
So, just throwing out ideas here again, you know, a clear justification on why 79% of publicly owned lands in, in a county the size of ours, why would we need to put another layer of, of control in here? You know, I mean, and this is kind of the, the opening statement of a, a document. This is why this matters, because if it's just a belief system that we should keep people, I don't know, limiting development, whatever. So I, it's kind of an uncomplete thought there, but I mean, I struggle with the fact that it's good to talk about this, and, you know, defining a, a place on a map where the DRR is fine too, but, you know, prohibiting is going to be the hard part for me, the justification about, well, here's your private land and there's deer here, so we're going to tell you what you can't do, and here's a list. You know, that's just, I'm just saying, at the closure of this, it's, I'll be, I'll be scrutinizing that. And then also, it's a reference point, you know, I, I have, I grew up in Michigan originally, just to, you know, out of high school and college, but, I mean, I have friends and they have a, you know, a huge, you know, private land partialization in southern Michigan, or, you know, the Michigan Peninsula, and there's deer everywhere. So I, you know, I just struggle with, well, what, what is the big picture here, you know? And Commissioner Dare mentioned, I mean, I've, I've had the elk all over my property this year, you know, 50 and 100 at a time. And a couple of weeks ago, the, the young babies were just dancing around out there. It was the most beautiful thing you ever saw. And now I've seen some deer also. So just throwing out information as we're sitting here.
Yeah, I think, and we'll have more kind of supporting information from, from the actual scientists of, you know, why these things are conflicts, you know, habitat fragmentation, migration, that kind of thing.
Well, but as I say, I, there's a reference point here, and, you know, my, one of my friends from, you know, grade school, he's like, yeah, the deer are coming through all the time, and they're everywhere.
Northeast and the Midwest, deer populations are at this point higher than they were in pre-European settlement times. That's not the case, you know, not the case in a, in an area like this.
So maybe we should have more partialization and private property ownership, so the deer can be happy eating the flowers that the, that we try to put in in the spring, right? We put out some tulips the other, last fall over a-
Never put in tulips, yeah.
Over a place where we buried a horse the, the last year. But yeah, the tulips are totally eaten down.
Yeah, it's more a matter of what the, what the original habitat was like 300 years ago and what it is now.
Well, it's a state dropping-
More than, more than, you know, putting in more subdivisions. It's, it's a pretty different situation than-
Oh, yeah. Oh yeah, I'm just pointing out, there's, there's a spectrum of ideas out here, you know? Let's not go down one path, let's go down all the paths.
And, and I just, you know, kind of to, to, to your question about the, the public lands, I just wanted to reemphasize that national forest lands are generally higher elevation forested summer range, while the concern, the specific focus of this, of this inventory was mule deer winter range. And the winter range lies in the lower elevations. You need bitter brush and you need other things in, in there to, to make winter range.
Or fields of alfalfa and orchard grass. I'm just throwing out all the ideas, all the ideas.
But you don't have fields of alfalfa in the middle of the winter. What you have is, you know.
Actually, they do eat at the field of alfalfa right by me. It says no hunting and I, there's usually like 25 deer in there. I think they can, they can read. They know that that's their favorite spot.
See?
And you always have to go very slowly.
And where to eat.
There is, but there's no alfalfa in January and February. And that's when the deer are in the winter range, eating bitter brush and other.
Well, they're standing there eating something. I mean, they're, they're taking it down, but.
Well, they, they may very well be, they may very well be migrating between winter range and summer range and browsing on some, on some alfalfa along the way. But the need for winter range habitat is for the middle of winter and there is no alfalfa growing in the middle of winter.
But has the state cut back on the number of deer tags that they, they have?
Yeah, we confirmed that with ODF and.
How many have they cut back? I mean, significant?
No, but it's proportionate. ODF and W indicated that it was proportionate to the, kind of the decline in the population.
Okay.
They're definitely kind of tracking that.
Okay. Yeah, if you, is that somewhere here for us to look at? I just was.
Um, no, they didn't give me the specific numbers of tags. I could probably find that out, but I know that they expressed that they did definitely reduce them.
Okay.
I'm sure that ODF would be happy to come in to, to speak about.
Absolutely.
The need for winter range declines in populations, habitat needs, habitat connectivity and those things. If, if we'd like to have that information as background for making these decisions.
That's actually a really nice segue to our public information.
The next step, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Chang. But it's true. I think, you know, I'm not the scientist, even though that would be really cool. But we will rely on ODF and W for a lot of their, their kind of observations and statistics. And we intend to, we've been partnering with them throughout this process and we intend to have them either physically or on Zoom available for, we're going to have a couple of public information sessions throughout the summer prior to public hearings. We want to get all that information out there and hopefully in our publications as well that we put online. And related to that, I will note that they made a point of saying that these, these borders of this proposed zone, you know, there are deer outside of those lines. It doesn't necessarily mean, because I remember we had a lot of comments in the early public open houses, you know, I've seen deer here, why isn't that included here? And, you know, what this polygon represents is, is the area that ODF and W and our wildlife biologist consultant recognized as the most critical to maintaining overall deer habitat. But this is kind of a subset of that. They've kind of done the, their own analysis from a wildlife biologist standpoint. So it is possible certainly to have deer running around wreaking havoc or, or dancing or outside of these borders. It's not exclusive. They don't stop at that line. And just one other comment about kind of the uses, and this will come out more as we bring this more fully formed to the board and, and to the public. A lot of the uses that staff is starting at suggesting prohibition, they don't, they're not super popular uses in the first place. A lot of them aren't, aren't super prevalent or some of them we've not approved at all or never been applied for in the county. Or those that exist are outside of the gold five wildlife inventory. So it's just something to consider and we'll, we'll certainly drill down on that more. But a lot of them, you know, paintball courts, things like that, there aren't a tremendous amount. There's not a huge demand for that. Nevertheless, should be considered because it is still a property right that's, that's there right now. But just, that's just been coming up in our analysis a little bit. So I'm going to just really briefly go through our proposed timeline. I will note just in general that these are target dates. We are, because this document is so complex and because there's so much public outreach, it's a little bit flexible, I will say. We, our aim is probably to be within about two weeks of these dates that we have here. We want to stick to this and we want to get it done. We just want to make sure that we do it right and have as much outreach as possible, as much education as possible. It's complicated. It's hard for me to get my head around it and I'm looking at this every day. So I want to really make sure that, that the person at home sitting there, looking at these amendments want, fully understands what it means to them and their property. So we're really trying to be very, very conscious of that, conscious of that. We're going to provide a similar update to the planning commission next week, the 26th. And then all of the standard procedures as far as 35 day notice with DLCD, all of that fun stuff. Essentially, we are aiming for a first evidentiary hearing with the planning commission in late to, probably late July, possibly early August. The ideal date would probably be around July, should I say 16th or 14th? 14th, excuse me. It might, it might be a little bit later than that, but that is our general idea. So prior to that, our goal is to have public information sessions, both live and virtual, to just give information, hopefully have some information from ODF and W and just talk about what we're doing, what this means, what it doesn't mean, maps, you know, an opportunity for people to ask questions, just informal conversations. We want to get people kind of on, on, on the basic level of understanding before that hearing process. We anticipate having to do a measure 56 mailing to properties where we may be reducing some of the uses on their properties. We will be figuring out exactly who that's going to in the next several weeks. That's standard for that kind of thing that reduces or limits existing uses on properties. And those have to be done between 20 and 40 days before the first hearing.
So for clarity, there's an existing wildlife zone and there's an proposed expanded area. Is that going to, 56 notice go out to everybody?
It will probably go out to, because there's going to be new, well, what we're suggesting, new uses applied to the old or the current zone, it will likely go out to those in the existing zone as well. Because there are going to be changes or proposed changes. We're also going to be doing just general mailings, just if people don't quite qualify for a measure 56 notice, we still want to get kind of everybody, we want everyone knowing about this. So we're going to devise lots of mailings, website, new story map, kind of all, all of that. We want to just have people really on board. And yeah, and that'll all lead up to, to the first public hearing. And then depending on how long that takes, we anticipate it coming to the board probably within a month or two after the planning commission public hearings, depending on schedules. So probably in the fall, I would say. That's just my best guess at the moment. So that's our general, our general trajectory. There's a lot of moving pieces and we've been consulting with ODF and W and Department of Land Conservation and Development. It's a, it's a meaty document and so we just want to make sure that it is legally sound and makes sense. And, and we are just working really hard on this and we're excited to, to move it through the process. So that's my general.
So Tanya, can you tell me who came up with 188,000 acres then that you're?
That came from, in the first phase of the project, through our interagency working group, which was ODF and W, I believe it was Fish and Wildlife, although they were more concerned with the birds, so the other parts of it. And then we had hired a wildlife biologist consultant as part of that project. So she sort of helped them take their data. They all worked together to figure out how to turn their raw data, which I believe I have somewhere here in the story map, and turn that into actual borders. And that's how they devised that. This, this stuff on screen is a, some of their snapshots, you can't really read it because there's stuff on top of it. But that's, you know, they do caller data and GPS, all of their methodologies for kind of figuring out where the deer go, where they are, where they aren't. It came from, from those wildlife biologists.
Okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome. So I don't know if there's any other questions, but we will continue to check back with the board as often as you would like us to, if there's any developments in the schedule or any, any kind of relevant updates where we want to keep everybody apprised and in the loop and moving forward. And it should be a busy summer.
So BLM land is the other, so these, these would only apply to Deschutes County private property land use development codes, correct? And then I'm just thinking, you know, the, the comment of the Forest Service and then the BLM lands, there's probably a lot of areas which would be maybe that either winter range or at least, you know, large public parcels. So, you know, those are two could complement each other.
BLM land is, is, is probably more relevant for winter range than, than Forest Service. And, you know, the, the major concerns I would, I would guess in BLM areas are, you know, heavy traffic, you know, heavy recreational traffic issues and also juniper encroachment because juniper chokes out all of the other, you know, juniper is not a browsable, a browsable plant species for, for, for mule deer. And, you know, as we all know, there's way more juniper now than there historically was 150, 200 years ago. So we don't necessar, you know, if, if juniper is the issue on BLM, you know, is one of the big issues on BLM land, our, our restriction or non-restriction of various land uses is not so relevant to that. Encouraging more juniper treatments to resort, stage sage step habitat is, would be helpful to the deer.
Great. Any questions? I don't know, are there any other questions?
Uh, thank you for the presentation this morning. It's, it's truly, it's, it's timely. So I'm glad that we are finally picking up on this issue and, you know, hopefully we can go to other species when we complete this one.
Yeah, and again, this is what we're presenting or what we will be is, is just a starting point for the discussion. So I think it'll be interesting to see how that may or may not change. And, you know, it's, it's a process and that's why we have the public process. So it's, it's a lot to digest for everybody. And so our hope is that by having this, this timeline, it'll get everybody kind of on the same page and be able to make informed decisions.
One of the interesting things we're seeing, the function of outreach and connection to the community these days. So the mailer, mailer will be good, but I mean, I just know we, you know, as a county, we put out notifications about budget committee and planning commission and just the different things we do, press releases that go out. And people are not getting the same information today. I mean, let's be real careful and I don't know what the answer is. As I say, running for office right now, I know that there are people totally different communication paths these days. And they're not hearing about what's happening in, in other, other worlds. I mean, they're disconnected. It's not a healthy state to be in, but we all know this. This is the function of technology and following your tribe down some path of some new, new online tool these days. But yeah, just, just acknowledging that direct mailer is going to be valuable because.
Yeah, I think we're trying every, you know, short of knocking on doors, we're going to try physical mailers. As, it's not just going to be internet based stuff, you know, it's, it's, we're going to do.
What about a billboard? I mean, that might be something really, we're like, oh, guess what Deschutes County is doing now? Yeah, I know. I mean, I do think mailers, I, you know, I suggested that to the health department during COVID that it would have really been helpful if they, we could have done some mailers. I just feel like not everyone is on the internet and they're not. And so let's acknowledge that and, you know, mailing sounds like an excellent idea.
And we're trying also, we have a, well, it is the internet, but we do have a mailing list already that we generated from the first phase. So we have a bunch of people on that and a lot of interested citizens on this project. Did a TV spot yesterday.
I know, I saw you. You were wonderful.
I wouldn't have to talk about it.
15 minutes, there you go.
I did not watch it because I can't watch myself, but I don't think I put, but we're trying to do, you know, not just the internet is my point and we really want to get, get it out there, so.
Well, it was great, the coverage on the news though, because I'm sure a lot of people saw it.
Yeah.
And they'll be aware and they'll file it and go like, oh wow, you know, we're doing something. I know a lot of people wanted us to do, you know, like all the birds and all the elk and everything at the same time. But truly, since it hasn't been done in so long, I think we're probably starting out where we can be successful the whole way through.
Agreed.
So thank you, Tanya.
I just want to mention one of the, one of the subpopulations of our constituencies that I, I've been in a lot of contact with about this issue is hunters and hunting organizations. And I've benefited a lot from having discussions with, with those folks. And I'm, I'm curious whether my, my fellow commissioners would be interested in having some of them come in to, to, to speak, you know, like giving them a block of time or an opportunity to present on mule deer winter range and its importance.
They're the original environmentalists, right? I mean, they want to see a happy, healthy population. So I'd be very supportive. Any, any comments are going to be really good down that path. And I mean, there's a big picture here, the planning commission and the board of commissioners and the community engagement. So I don't know, you know, if the flow would be good just to have, you know, hunter groups coming to join us at a board meeting or maybe the planning commission and consolidate all the comments or whatever. I'm just pointing out that.
Tanya, do you have any suggestions on?
Good question.
On where that, that might fit in the process?
I'll have to get back to you on that one, but I do remember we spoke to them. We did a little presentation, was it, I guess probably last year to the hunters. I forget the name of the group, but it was, it was really informative for me and I think they valued it as well, just kind of telling them what's coming down the pike or what we are hoping to work on. I think maybe there would be a place for them at kind of the information sessions. I don't know necessarily to make a presentation or just to provide feedback. I'll have to think about that a little bit more.
Be engaged.
But they, yeah, we definitely want to reach out to them for sure.
I have opportunities to do things like make presentations at the, at the Oregon Hunters Association chapter locally, chapters locally and things like that. So just offering my fellow commissioners the opportunity to have contact with those constituencies.
Yes. So Tanya, perhaps you can track them down.
Absolutely.
Have you got the pun?
I did.
I thought, well, I know, most people go elk hunting in Moore County, in Hepner, so anyway. And I know that population has really changed because they've changed where they run now because there are so many wolves over there. Because now I get to see them when I go home. All right, okay, I believe we are journeying today. We are heading out, so.
So yeah, Redmond Economic Development Annual Lunch today.
At the Fairgrounds, so we will see you all there.
And so that's it for the day, no other follow up?
Right, we didn't have anything else today, I don't believe. We were good.
Good.
All right. So next week we have budgets, starting what, Monday?
Oh yes, this is it.
In this room.
Got the budget books, yep.
Oh boy.
Finders arrived yesterday.